Great. So it seems like we are now live, so we will get started. Thank you, everyone, for joining us once again on Zoom. And I think the first thing that we will do is approve the minutes from last month, February 22. Rosemary took the minutes. They've been extensively distributed and revised, but I think we've got something everybody is pretty comfortable with. So all I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? Charlie, you. All in favor? Just I.
I.
I. Okay, great. Anybody opposed? Terrific. Okay, the minutes are approved and we will go to our first case with which is Okumura on Hancock Place. Do we have somebody who is appearing on that?
Yes, we do.
Super.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Christina Griffin, the architect, and I'm I'm here to ask for a variance for a adding an emergency generator to the property at to Hancock Place. I'm going to share the screen so I can go through the drawings with you.
Great, thank you.
Well, the the cover sheet is just showing the entire house. We are in the process of completing the renovation of this house and the addition on the front. And today I'm coming to you to request a variance so that we can add an emergency generator. I'm going to blow this up for you. Our plan is to add this unit on the right here at the corner of the house on the back of the house, but towards the corner. It needs to have a certain distance from the house, but it does meet this back. The rear yard setback, it's outside of the aqueduct buffer. But we need a variance because we are adding 11 square feet to the coverage calculations. And over here on the right is our table of zoning data and existing where our total coverage is 13.25%. And it is, which is 3,00907 square feet, which is a nonconforming coverage. And our proposed coverage is 11 square feet more, 3,918 square feet, which is 13.29%. 0.04% increase. This emergency generator will be fueled by an underground propane tank, so it's that's not visible. I want to show you the drawings we have. This is the unit that is approximately two feet by four feet on a on a concrete pad. And we also have some have elevations to show you what it would look like against the building. A second. Okay. On the north side of the house, we are showing that emergency generator here. It's required to be six feet from the house. So we're showing it here on the north elevation, surrounded by shrubbery. And we are down below is our rear or east elevation. And you can see the emergency generator right here in front of the corner of the house facing the backyard. Our plans are on the left, just a blow up to show that the generator is off the corner of the house, six feet. And you see the shape on the left is really just the underground propane tank that will be fueling the emergency generator and also a barbecue. On our next page, we're showing photographs on the left is the north east corner of the house. And we have over, we have showing the profile of the proposed generator right here. Which will be surrounded by shrubbery. And then over on the right, we have another view of that corner. Which is showing the emergency generator right here. And that is the extent of my presentation. I also have the emergency generator specifications. I don't know if you need to see that.
I don't, my, I guess one of my questions is, I think this is the second or third time you've been before us fairly recently. At least this application has been before us. And I'm wondering why this wasn't part of the original application.
I I think that I think we were only in front of the zoning board once when we went because we had to the the house even before we started had nonconforming coverage. And then we took away a lot of previous coverage, so we would end up with the same as before. But we we had to rearrange. But I don't think we've been to the zoning board again since until now. And it's unfortunately, we started discussing the emergency generator last summer and it was after we got our approvals and our building permit. And it just wasn't a consideration, of course, now. This is a very important feature for homes and unfortunately, we did not take that into consideration when we were planning the house.
This is Judd. Was this the property where there was a garage that was converted?
Yes.
To like a living room and then there was a new garage that was put to the front of the house and the driveway shifted from where the aqueduct was to the front of the house?
Yes.
Okay, so I think I I recall that that this property was for the zoning because there was an aqueduct buffer. So we were, we were making, you know, changes for built building within 30 feet. Because I remember saying that it's I'm okay with it as long as soundproofing was put into that room. Soundproofing like insulation, just to make sure that any noise in there wouldn't kind of travel to the aqueduct.
Correct. Yeah, I remember that. Yep.
Yes, I I think, yeah, of course, I forgot about that. We also discussed this rear wall of the old garage, which is now the family room, how we would handle that because it is in the aqueduct buffer. So I do think that was part of that submission.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, this is Rosemary. I guess so the the answer to the the previous question, why this wasn't part of the original application is it just wasn't hadn't hadn't come up?
Unfortunately, it did not. Unfortunately, we did not, we were, I think, so focused on solving the challenging problem of trying to reorganize a house so we could create a backyard and and still create that green space and park-like feeling next to the aqueduct. So I don't, I think we just missed it and I it became important, of course, as we were working in on the construction site. And then eventually we decided we would need to come to you because it is, even though it's very small, it's, of course, an increase in the coverage.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? And is there Sarah Plermo, is there anybody who wants to be heard on this from the public?
Nobody's raising their hand to speak and there are no comments in the chat.
Okay, terrific. Um, okay, you know, I guess the reason that I brought up, why hasn't this come up before is because we do not like to do things piecemeal. We really like when people come to us that they bring everything that they're going to do because it sometimes ends up being death by a thousand cuts if you keep coming back and coming back. But as you did know, this is 11 square feet. It makes very little difference in the percentage of coverage. And so, given the fact that it is something right increasingly, people are wanting to do, given some of the power outages we've had. I am willing to make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
A second, Judd.
Terrific. Thanks, Judd. Okay, so from top to bottom on my screen, Charlie.
I vote yes.
Rosie?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
John? John Dimling? Oh, he's muted. Oh, there we go. No.
He's still muted.
Yeah, you're still muted, Johnny. Yeah, there you go. Yes, now we can.
I'm sorry, I'm a neighbor, so I don't vote on this.
Okay, sorry, you were noticed on this. Okay, so you are approved and I will send you a letter later this week to that effect.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You too. Okay, what about Willingham is our next case, 20 Elm Park? Do we have somebody on that? Yes, we do.
Good evening, board members, chairperson Gardner. I just want to make sure the whole team is on before we start moving forward. So if you can just give me one second to confirm. And I'm assuming you guys can hear me, right? I'm good here?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I think everyone is on. I don't know if Chris Munch is on, but.
Sorry, he didn't raise his hand to speak. Hold on.
Apologies, if you can bring him in or if I can do that somehow, I don't know. But anyway, okay, Chris Munch is on. Thank you. Thank you for the patience. So my name is George Ellis Androtos. I am from Keenham Bean. I'm an associate at Keenham Bean. We represent Tom Willingham, he's the applicant in this 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 project. House is located at 20 Elm Park. It's in the Two West District. It's a one-family house. It's actually, I I in our prior meetings with boards, 20 Elm Park is sort of, people don't really know where it is. So just for context, it's off Main Street. If you make a left on South Dearman, you go all the way down South Dearman. And then you go a little further down and 20 Elm Park is right there. And we'll have a, in our presentation tonight, we'll be able to have an aerial that'll show you more context for that. But, you know, pursuant to conversations we've had with the planning board, we've been before them twice. Our applicant, Tom Willingham, he intends to age in place in the house with he and his wife intend to age in place. So there are certain variances we need. We need, as stated on the agenda, we need FAR, we need coverage, we need the rear yard setback and the croton aqueduct buffer, which in this case, I guess, because of the way the house is situated, they're sort of one in the same. It's the same distance as the 30 feet and it's from the same side of the property. It's the western side of the property. And there's also a side yard variance that that we are prepared to discuss. So with me tonight, I forgot to introduce my team. I'm sorry. I have Mark Schulman and Nick Marks from Design Development. They are the architects on the project. And I have Chris Munch from Gray Bookings. He is the project manager and the owner's representative on the project. So so we're all here and we're going to seek approval for these variances. So without further ado, I think we can begin our presentation. I will. Nick is sharing a screen. Great. So the way and and, you know, if you guys want it done in any other way, you know, feel free. We we will make it as easy as possible for you. But I will start discussing the coverage on the FAR variances. And then Mark Schulman, he'll be able to go more into the rear yard setback, the croton aqueduct and the side yard buffer. So with that being said, if you guys are good to go, we're good to go.
Great. Yep, go ahead.
All right. So this is a rendering of the property. This is 20 Elm Park. It's a very nice house. It's really nestled in the corner there, but there are some some variances that we need to move forward with this project. With our hearings with the planning board, we have taken the necessary, you know, mitigation measures, I guess you can call them, to make as few variances as possible, as, you know, minimal increases as possible. But we we are brought today for these variances. So Nick, if you can go to the next slide. So this is the aerial map of the surrounding property. The property is, it's property number one right there. It's 20 Elm Park. It's actually two parcels. One property, but as you see, Main Street is up there where it says 13, 9, 8, 7, 6. As you guys know, South Dearman is right where that number 11 is circled. And then just a little further, you have 20 Elm Park. So this aerial view here, it takes into account the surrounding properties that actually got the notice. It's the affected neighbors by the term of the by the code within 200 feet. And we added in those two properties on the corner there in terms of the the square. So Nick, if you can go to the next slide. So this is a table that compares coverage and FAR for the proposed work at 20 Elm Park and then the surrounding existing coverage and FAR to the best of our ability, obviously, for the surrounding neighborhoods. And we 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 came with this table before the planning board. And they, and Edmira, the building inspector there, he said, the calculations, the method to the madness was 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 legitimate. So just so I can give you some context on how we came up with this, we use Greenberg GIS. And I looked at the property cards and on the property cards, I don't know if you're familiar with them. But they have, on the second page, they have a dwelling computations. That's a total living area. That's the FAR. That's, you know, it's essentially what FAR is. For coverage, they also have a plot sketched on each property card. So we took the, we took what that was. And then we added 25% to account for walks, retaining walls, miscellaneous hardscapes. That's at one of the asterisks below the table here. So now in the the first row up top there, we have the existing 20 Elm Park. And then the second one is proposed. So we're looking at a coverage and FAR, coincidentally, same number, 157% of the allowed. And obviously, the formulas for the FAR and the coverage, they came from the the Village Code. And, you know, those were all calculated based on that. So based on these surrounding properties and the key on the left, those numbers correspond to the map that we saw on the previous side, the aerial. So if you have any questions, we could flip back and forth. But basically, the shaded cells represent amounts in excess of 100%, which there are quite a few and and that has, you know, that it plays a role, what kind of property we're looking at and what what the lot size and and all that. But I think more importantly, out of the these properties, 21 properties are over 100% of the allowable coverage. And of those 21, 16 are over 157%. 157% being the percentage that 20 Elm Park would be over with whatever additions and and, you know, changes are made there. 22 properties are over 100% are over 100% of the allowable FAR. Of those 22 properties, 15 are over the 157%. So while 157% sounds like a substantial number, one, some of these other numbers are much more substantial for comparison's sake. But also, it's it's not just one or two more properties. It's actually a significant majority of the other properties have, you know, greater FAR, greater coverage. And I understand it's not, it might not necessarily be perfect to the T in terms of, you know, because we were using the property cards. But this is a general, you know, comparison to the surrounding neighborhood to 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 see where we stand with coverage and FAR. Now, of note, our properties number four and property number 11, those are the neighbors to the north and to the east of the property. They have been, you know, they they've seen these plans, they've seen everything that that Tom wants to do. And they are on board with the changes. They 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 have no, no objections to any of the changes, no, no issues with anything. So the neighbors that are directly affected as well, they they are, they are on board and good to go.
George, can I ask you a question? We're on this page.
Yes.
So I am reading this correctly, that this is the biggest house of all these houses. This is the biggest house in terms of existing coverage and existing FAR. Yes?
Um, it it looks that way. Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm reading correctly.
But but that is, if you, you know, it takes into account too that there are, you know, it's two, two parcels and and also some of the other houses, it's along Main Street, so some of them are a little, you know, tight there. But yes, that's that that looks like it's a fair, you know, other than obviously the apartment complex.
Right. Yep.
But that's coverage and FAR. And I'll hand it off now to Mark Schulman and he could, he can get into the the other setbacks and croton aqueduct and and that stuff.
Thank you, George. Nick, if you will, the next slide, please. So here is an architectural, here's an architectural site plan. And essentially, and I'll have Nick point these out. So just again, to put this in context. So you see that the the property boundary, the existing house sits over on the, so north is straight up and west to the left. So you see the existing house, for the most part, sits within the setback and within the croton aqueduct buffer. And what we are proposing are the areas that are shaded. So what we have right now, and I'll, so there's a, a, at the top of the page is a single level master bedroom suite located there. You will notice there's a very tiny sliver of space there that actually sits to the left of the property line within that side yard setback. And then as you go down to the left-hand corner, there are a few things going on here that I want to explain to you. The first, what you see dashed in red, there is an existing stair and retaining walls that provide access from that backyard, it's a lawn area, down into the basement level. And right now, the proposal is to remove the retaining walls and the stair. And we're introducing new stair goes down to the lower level. We needed to do that to resolve some issues related to stormwater and flooding. So that's where we're going with that. The the hatched area just above that represents a, essentially, it's a door out from the kitchen onto a landing, six steps down onto the lawn. So that just gives access down to the lawn area from the kitchen area or the main living area. And then what's not hatched, but just to the right of that is an enclosed, we're actually enclosing, thank you, Nick. So in that red rectangle, we are enclosing what is currently a porch, two-story porch with, we're enclosing that to reconfigure an interior staircase up to the second floor. So there's no coverage increase there. It's only floor area. But it does sit within the 30-foot setback and the aqueduct buffer. But it sits within the existing footprint of the current, of those current balconies. So in essence, there is no change in coverage. So all said, there's actually a reduction in coverage because of, because we're taking out that existing stair and retaining walls and simply introducing a new compact stair to the lower level. And again, that the the landing and the stair down to the grass area. So those, that, those, those are the, within that lower left-hand corner, those are all of the items that that require the setback requirements. I want to also show you, and Nick, if you can, to go to the next slide. In that area, so this helps put, also put this in context. So the section. So what you see to the left, we've identified in section, essentially, this is a section elevation. We've put a person there at the center of the aqueduct. And you can see there's a slight riser grade change up to that rear property liner. And then there's a seven-foot high wall. So if you look at the diagram at the bottom, anybody walking along that aqueduct can't see into the rear yard anyway. That's an existing condition. So you literally look over, you you look over the, obviously, the stair that goes to the basement, you can't see at all. You can't see the small landing and stair that goes down to the backyard or the the door. Just the, just the very top left portion of that door jam, you might be able to see from down there. You will be able to see the the modified or the extended footprint for the stair enclosure, which used to be the two-story porch. So that, in essence, is the extent of the the variances we're requesting in that back buffer. And then the last one is a rear and side yard buffer. Nick, if you can go to the next slide, please. So in the upper left-hand corner, there is a proposed generator right there off of the the back corner of the house that also sits within within the buffer and within the setback. And also, Nick, if you could just pan down a little bit so we can see the note, please. Thank you. So you see that, so there's a dash line that represents the propane tank, which will be buried. And essentially, that that generator is blocked by the same seven-foot high wall. There's some landscaping back there in the housing. And then there is landscape screening around it so that you you can't really, you you will not be able to see that from any of the adjacent neighbors. So it's pretty well buffered from everyone around. And that essentially, you know, that that sums up.
Aqueduct buffer?
It also sits within the aqueduct buffer. That is correct.
Also in the side yard setback or?
It is. Yes. Nick, if you can, can you just give a red line where the the buffer and rear yard setback line is and the side yard setback, please? So that line there at the top is the side yard setback. And that line vertically up and down is essentially the aqueduct buffer and the rear yard setback. So it's tucked away in the corner. And as as George mentioned, this whole proposal really impacts only two residents, the one straight up the page and the one to the far right. And both have seen the plans and both have have actually documented and are in favor of the proposed project.
Why does the generator have to be there? That I I do not love the generator being in the buffer. Or to be honest with you.
Yeah. So the reason, the reason is there is that the electricity comes in out that corner. And it was that it was the shortest run from the electrical service connection. That's the primary. And there's also a couple of, just a couple of existing AC units. So there are condensing units right there. And and there's mechanical space in the basement. So it's all within close proximity to the mechanical space within, you know, within the residential, you know, within the basement area. That's the primary reason for its location.
Is there anywhere else you can put that?
May I speak to that?
Please.
Oh, sorry. My name is Chris. How are you? I don't think Nick has the picture, but that actually is at basement level. So the grade that comes around that circle, where the two AC condensers are, is actually a, it's it's walkout basement level. It's tucked into the bottom corner and it keeps it as the lowest point on the property. We put it there for the mechanical reasons, but also to keep it well-hidden and low. We're going to be putting in a Generac, probably a 22KW, which has got the lowest decibel rating. And we're trying to keep it as low and as quiet as possible. Out of view, the property, if you move it anywhere else along the property, becomes in view of someone. So we tried to bury it in to keep it in as low as we can. You can't tell from this map, but there's a couple of photographs that we did as we were placing this to figure out where is the best place to put it to keep it as, you know, as close to the ground as possible, to keep it as quiet as we can and buffer it in.
And how much will be visible from there, from the aqueduct?
Zero. There's this, along the entire, hey, Nick, do you have that picture? But along the entire back of the property, this is the aqueduct, is a wall. Let me see if Nick can track down that a back picture, an actual photograph of the aqueduct. It probably is in his library. But the whole back of this property, along the aqueduct, has a seven-foot concrete wall that's been there. That's been there forever, going from one end to the other. It has a, I don't know if you've walked the aqueduct, it has a red gate, a red door that brings you in.
Uh, this is Judd. So at the south end of the property where you were talking about, you know, converting the, uh. The, the porch to the stairwell. Um, what's, what's the elevation there versus, uh, of the ground versus the north end? Where, where the generator, because you said that the generator was gonna be at sort of at a sub-level, just to get an idea of, of elevation.
Okay, so from this picture, if you see that ivy-covered wall. And that tree, the generator would be at the base of that tree on the opposite side of that wall by, I don't know, eight, eight or seven or eight feet in. And the best thing to be would be to show where the opposite side is. To show the rendering for the closing. So do you see this potential picture? That would be the tree from the other side of the wall, that's the basement door, the generator would sit by where that cream-colored pot is right there.
I got you. So at the sa- at the south end of the property, you don't, you can stay on that picture, but on the south end of the property. Uh, the elevation would be sort of above that basement door, right? Okay, I understand.
Sorry, Mark. This line, this line here is a kind of an indicator of generally where the, uh, first floor, finished first floor is. So, so anything below that line is technically lower than the south side backyard.
Okay.
Nick, do you have the picture? I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, no, that's okay. Um, I was just gonna say, I think we've talked about every variance now except. F A R, have we fully explored to the F A R variance you're looking for?
Yeah, I, I think that, uh, so, uh, in, in the chart that George, uh, has indicated, that indicated both. Uh, can you just go back to that, the, the chart there, um, page two, please, Nick?
Yes.
That analysis was both for coverage and F A R.
Okay, alright, gotcha.
Yeah, I can see, yep, there you go.
Okay, well, that's, that's a lot of variances, um. Why don't we take them in the way that they were presented? Why don't we start with coverage? Does anybody have any comments on coverage?
Yeah, I, I have just a question. When you were going over the diagram, talking specifically about the, I guess, the, the. Um, I don't know, stairs that you're enclosing, you made some comment about the, um. The coverage number being reduced, are you just talking about in that particular area? Because the overall coverage number is not being reduced, right?
That's correct, that, that's an excellent point. Nick, if you can go back to the overall site plan, please. That, that is, that is a correct statement, exactly. So the, the, the coverage is actually reduced in that far-left-hand corner. What, so here's a couple of other things that, that, that increase coverage. Um, so you see up above, um, so, uh, a few things. One is that. Um, there's the portions of, of, the driveway is also being modified as well. Where the two cars are currently shown on plan, that area, um. Uh, per planning, we, we've been over this, uh, as George said, we've been to planning twice. So. The area where those cars would be located count towards coverage. So that has now been added to the coverage calculation. The, um, we had just also, uh, I think it's probably worth mentioning. But the red dashed areas that show removed patio to reduce coverage. So initially, when we came in with our proposal, we had a patio off the, the master bedroom suite at the top. And we had extended, um, the patio essentially at that courtyard, that area there. And we have, uh, as a way to, you know, to compromise and mitigate the coverage impact. We reduced the patio back, but the hatched area of the extension of the first master bedroom extension. And the hatched area of the extended courtyard also counted towards that coverage calculation. So while it gets reduced in the lower-left-hand corner, it gets increased by, essentially, to sum it up. Um, the, the single-story, uh, addition, an extension of that sort of courtyard surrounded by three walls. And the area under the part, the two, uh, parking spaces. They increase, that's where the increase in coverage comes from.
And, and what's the total increase in terms of square footage? I know you gave us a percentage, but.
Yeah, I just have to go back to that chart. So the existing on coverage, uh, existing is thirty-nine ninety-six. And the proposed, um, is, if I'm reading that correctly, the forty-six eighty-three.
Oh, roughly seven, seven hundred, right, that quick math, something like that.
Anybody else have any questions or comments about coverage?
Well, so Sarah, my comment is that the, the thesis, I'm having a little cognitive dissonance here, right? The thesis is that we need to make these changes in order for the owners to age in place. So they need to go from four thousand square feet to forty-seven hundred square feet in order to age in place. I have a hard time believing that. Like, I find that not compelling, right? I mean, it's a beautiful design and all of that other good stuff, but. I'm totally unconvinced that this is necessary.
Alright, so, so let, let me, let me, if you will, um, if I can help, uh, support the cause here. So right now, um, it, it's, uh, if you go to the, uh, we can take you to the, to the floor plan, but essentially, right now. Um, the way to age in place is, is to have essentially all of the living area on the ground floor. And right now, the master bedroom is currently located, and Nick, maybe you just go back to the, to the rendering, if you will, just for a second. But the, the current, the master bedroom is located on the second floor over the garage. So that is not conducive to, uh, aging in place. So the reason for the addition. Is to put a master bedroom on the ground floor, uh, which essentially is that single-story addition you see to the right. Um, that, uh, so that's, that's item number, item, essentially, item number one. Expanding the, the, that little courtyard area, the patio that you see out there, that outdoor space. That also added to the coverage calculation, it really is, it's really a courtyard sort of internal to the three walls of, of the space there. So, uh, again, I don't, not really an impact to any of, of the neighbors. And then the, the other point that I'll make. Is that the current driveway configuration, um, is, uh, very, um. It, it's very difficult to navigate, and there, there's been quite a, uh, quite a bit of conversation with the planning board about this. So right now, the way it's configured, you come in a narrow driveway, long, narrow, uh, driveway. With a significant amount of grade change on a curb. You come down and with a single car parked in the driveway. In its current configuration, there's no way to articulate around that car. Um, UPS trucks, delivery trucks, an ambulance, emergency vehicles, um. Can't come down there and articulate if there is an existing car in the driveway, which most of the time there is. Um, so most of, most of, uh, most large trucks, moving trucks, any large vehicles. Who know the property, don't go down the driveway, they stay at the top of the driveway. And what you can't see, but here, but they end up blocking the dri- the, the shared driveway to the neighbors left and right. So it's a, it's actually a problem not just for our client, but it's also a problem for our neighbors. And they have indicated as much in the letters that, that, uh, supporting the project. So by expanding the driveway and by allowing, about, allowing us two things. One, a place to put cars away from where you can articulate, number one. And second, by putting that hammerhead at the top of the page, allows a vehicle to come in, back into the hammerhead and pull back out. Um, so now we can get all of those vehicles down into the driveway. Um, so that, so that. The driveway doesn't count towards coverage, with the exception of the area under the two park spaces. So in essence, what I would, what I, what I'd, I'd say is, the simplest way to say this is that. The ground floor master plan is critical, uh, in, uh, aging in place. Um, you know, the, the, the additional coverage for the parking spaces is, um. Result of reconfiguring, uh, a poorly-designed driveway. And the extended, the extended patio area is, is, uh, um, again, really sort of, uh. It doesn't impact, um, anybody other than, other than the homeowner's ability to have some usable outdoor space.
So aging in place means I can't go upstairs to the bedroom, but I can still drive?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, or I, I would also tell you, so that this house is designed for a caretaker. Uh, it's ADA accessible, um, all are critical to, um, the needs of our client right now.
And your client bought the house within the last fourteen months, yes?
That's correct.
Okay, so he knew what he was buying?
That is correct.
Okay.
There is a, and I, and I'm just gonna dance around something very respectful to Tom. There is a, a, an evolving situation with aging in place that warrants, I don't know how to say this correctly. There's a, there is a, an evolution of a situation evolving in his life or their life. That will require ADA complacency in the future. And I'm trying to be as polite and as respectful to Tom's wishes as I can, but it isn't, this isn't a, um. A wish, it's going to become a need.
And, and Chris, we, we should also mention that that was discovered one immediately after purchasing that.
Right.
He didn't purchase the house knowing this, it was really a, a, a life moment that made this necessary.
Are there any other questions or comments? On, um, the coverage issue? I mean, I guess one of my comments is, I, I think one of the things I'm struggling with is. Um, I'm not sure that the list that you've given us in the beginning is, all of those properties are, are apples to apples. It's a, it's a neighborhood that. Uh, you're comparing it to a lot of houses that are quite a bit smaller on much smaller lots. And so those overage numbers are not. In my mind, all apples to apples. Does anybody else have a, a thought on that?
Oh, I agree with that a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Sir, I, I, Sarah, it's Sean, I had the same thought also.
And, and, and I understand that, Nick, if you could go back to that coverage chart for a second. Page three on this, right, yeah. So some of them aren't apples to apples, and, and we didn't, uh, you know, the, the, the. If, if you look the class on the right, it talks about, you know, some of them are vacant, some of them are apartments and condos. We were looking strictly at the residential, and, and some of them are residential, one-family or two-family year-round, because they're. They're along main street, so it's in that B business district. Um, but just because, you know. Some of them are in the B zoning district, doesn't mean it's not necessarily a one- or two-family house. Um, the, the purpose of this is to show that. There's not gonna be a change in the neighborhood, you know, there's not gonna be certainly a substantial change in the neighborhood. Um, it, it's, it's really in, huh, in accord, I guess you could say, with, with the character of the neighborhood. You know, some of them aren't gonna be apples to apples, you're absolutely right, like, number two is the apartment building complex, but. We're, we're, take that out and you're still at, you know, the, the other numbers for other houses that are one or two family houses.
If you look at four and eleven, which are the two you pointed out as direct neighbors. Eleven's just over a hundred percent. Um, four is significantly below, and you're looking to go to a hundred and fifty-seven. Um, that's a big difference between the two neighboring properties in terms of coverage.
Understandable, yes, and, and that, that just happens to be because of, you know, the, the geographic location of this, this property, but. Again, the, 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 I guess if you look at the existing coverage and the existing F A R. The percent increase isn't as significant as, you know, one might think at quick notice, but again, this was. Brought on by a, a, a need, as, as Chris said, we want to be respectful of, of Tom's, which is brought on by a need. That was sort of spur of the moment, and we've gone to the planning board several times, and, and Mark, Mark can speak to this too, there have been. You know, we, we've taken mitigation measures to make it as minimal as possible. Um, but, you know, when looking at numbers, it's also, substantiality isn't measured strictly based on numbers, too. It's also measured in the context of, of the surrounding neighborhood and, uh.
Yeah, George, if I can, the only other thing that I would say, that, you know, and having done this for, you know, many, many years, uh, being before boards. A lot of the issues re- related to, uh, the zoning and F A R are, are the negative impact on neighbors. And what it does to the community. And I think that what should be taken into consideration is the unique nature. Of this house and the property, and the fact that it is very much tucked away and hidden, most people don't know it exists. Um, we had members of the planning board did not know this house existed. So it's, it's a, it's a very unusual property. Um, in the heart of a downtown with a, uh, a bustling main street. So it's what makes it really, um, this happens to be a very unique situation. And, um, and I think the other thing that, that, that's positive to the, the proposal. Is that we do have buy-off from the neighbors. So the only, really, the only two neighbors that this impacts have reviewed this, understand the project. And they, uh, have, they're in favor of the project. So if you take that into consideration, this does not impact, really does not impact anyone else. Uh, from a, uh, from a zoning coverage, um, zoning F A R, uh, perspective.
Uh, this is, uh, Judd. So the, the coverage, the seven-hundred square feet, I mean, that, that's mostly coming from. That addition, right, on the north side?
That's correct.
Are there, are there, uh, you know, I mean, I, I, you know, just experiences with people converting. You know, gar- you know, I mean, garages into, um, a bedroom, a master suite. Are there, are there any, ha- has that been thought of, uh, the use of, of the existing first floor for conversion for a bedroom? Rather than at, making an addition?
We, we, we have, and, and you're right, you're, really, the only other, the only other way to make that work would be to take the garage away, but, but I think you still need to have. You know, you need to have, you know, vehicles, you know, in a garage, it, it's, it's the only way that it would work for them, so that, you know, that was not, uh. Um, that was a non-starter, as far as our client was concerned, was to take his garage away to make that work.
So in this neighborhood, you're making a lot of comparisons, uh, on coverage and F A R, but most of the, I mean, I don't know. What percentage of these properties have garages versus not, but in, in off the main street area. I would say most of them don't have garages. Just a thought.
Yeah. Um, and how much are you adding with that patio?
Chart that, that separates everything?
Yep. The zoning analysis.
So the original one was two nineteen and increased to three seventy-eight. Uh, so that would be.
Yeah, roughly a hundred and sixty square feet.
Yeah.
Alright, are there any other questions or comments about, um, coverage? And then I guess while we're at it, why don't we start, why don't we go to F A R? Uh, any questions? Does anybody have any questions or comments about the F A R?
Well, I think all my comments on coverage apply to F A R.
F A R, right, yeah, okay, yep, yep, I hear ya. Um, let's go to the buffer and the, the side yard setback, because I have to say that. That does bother me, I mean, uh, I don't love. The noise that's gonna be generated either from testing or from use of the generators impacting. The aqueduct, that does, uh, that is a concern for me. Does anybody else have any comment on that?
I, Sarah, I agree, Sean, I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, you know, I mean, I live off the aqueduct, I, I'm concerned about anything that encroaches on the aqueduct, on the setback. You know, regardless of whether or not, you know, like, I just don't wanna set the precedent that it's okay.
Right.
So, I'm sorry, in, in regard to that, if we move the generator from where its current location is. To in, to the, technically, the up the hill out of the aqueduct buffer, would that, that, would that? That, would that help mitigate your concerns?
Well, so there is not, so, the generator being in the aqueduct buffer is not actually on the list of things that we're considering here.
Like, yeah, I hadn't seen that as well.
Right, it's not, so like, it's kind of, it's kind of outside the scope of what we're supposed to be voting on.
That, that, my understanding is that that is in the side yard and rear yard setback.
Right, it's not in, it's not an aqueduct buffer violation.
Well, there is, one of the listed things is intrusion into the aqueduct buffer, it isn't, doesn't that refer to the generator as well as? I think there's some very small portion of the other.
It's, it's, for the proposed future generator, it just says variance for encroachment in the rear yard setback, the side yard setback and variance exceeds allowable coverage. It doesn't say anything about the aqueduct setback.
That, that was my reading of it as well, I, I'm a little, I was, um. Not expecting to see that, I thought the, the aqueduct issue was more the addition encroaching to a very small. Uh, amount.
Where connects to the existing home.
Right, right. But having said that, um. Anytime you need less variances is a good thing for us, so if you not have to put that in the aqueduct buffer. Um, that would certainly be much more favorable.
Tom, I have no issues with slide, I mean, Mark, I have no issues with sliding the generator up. It's still gonna be in a side yard buffer? Because to do that, I'd have to put it in the front yard to get it out of the side yard, but we could get it out of the rear yard buffer just by simply sliding it up.
Yeah.
So I had, I, I had an opinion just on that generator.
Mm-hmm.
Where you're currently putting at it is, is kind of subterranean right now.
Yeah, almost.
And, and the height from where I believe you're proposing it to the height of that wall is probably greater than seven feet. And then if you move it, if you move it, um. I guess it would be to the east up the hill, which would be further away from the aqueduct, it might, you might be bringing it uphill. Which then you might be able to hear from the aqueduct, be correct. I just.
That was our intention, was to put it down in the hole.
I, I think that's an accurate analysis.
Yeah.
Do, do we have any sense of how much noise it will make? Uh, you know, if you're on the aqueduct, given that you lowered it there, I, I'm not. I know very little about acoustics.
Um. From a decibel rating, Generac has the lowest enclosed cabinet. Um, it is basically a running car. So, yeah, exercise is itself a weekly seven minutes, it's usually a twenty-two KW. The Generac Guardian series, which is, I believe, it was on the prior application. That's basically the gen set, i- is, is the lowest decibel rating generator there is. Um, so that's kind of why everybody uses them, that and parts availability, so. If you consider your car running in the driveway, that's about the noise level you'll hear at exercise. It runs at a lower RPM during exercise and a higher RPM during emergency status, which is sort of the counterpart if the power's out. You're generally in a storm situation, so you're, the noise is, would be probably mitigated by the rain.
Um, also want to add, Chris, that's a good point, that it's about the same noise level as a car. Um, the parking lot, um, off of Main Street for the old Quon Aqueduct is actually. Roughly plus or minus at the start of the corner of our property line, so. You do have cars, actually here you can see asphalt parking area, so it stops right here, so you actually have cars parked. Um. Within a ten foot radius of the generator. Um, so if anything, it would be similar to a car that's parked there that's on.
Unless it's a Tesla.
Unless it's a Tesla, correct.
So, but we are not object to sliding it up the hill, but I agree with you, sir, that it is, it would. Potentially increase the noise level, but slide it out of the technical variance setback.
So here's a, more of a procedural question, uh, to the group, to the board, really. Um. I didn't see this noticed as a generator unless I misread it, which is entirely possible. I didn't see this as a generator in the aqueduct buffer.
Correct.
And I'm not sure we can approve it if it wasn't properly noticed. Am I wrong about that?
Well, it just says intrusion into the aqueduct buffer.
Yeah, it does say that, it didn't say what.
Right, so the notice, the notice is accurate, right?
Okay, okay.
In the detail, the breakout and the letter from the planning, uh, from the planning board breaks it out a little bit more finely about what the specific intrusion or exceptions are, so. I think it's been noticed, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good, all right, that makes it a little easier. Um. Anybody else, does anybody from, uh, the audience, so to speak, who would like to be heard on this?
Um, there's nobody raising their hand to speak and there are no comments in the chat.
Okay. Um, what about board members, would, does anybody have anything they want to contribute in terms of overall impressions of this proposal?
Well, you know, I, I mean, this is an, when you walk down the aqueduct, which I do every day, right? This is an imposing house on the aqueduct, it's right on the line, right? As is, you know, the multifamily housing next to it, right? And making, making the coverage on the lot bigger, I think is antithetical to what we really want to have going on, on the aqueduct, right? Which is we want a more of a park-like, you know. Uh, atmosphere, and, 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 you know, there's, there's parts of the aqueduct that are like that and there are parts of the aqueduct that, you know. Are dense, they have multifamily housing on them, but, you know, for me, I'm having a hard time thinking that this is a net, a good thing.
I, I surely have the same feeling and one thought does occur to me. If we grant this variance for these people who are in this, in these circumstances, and I, I certainly, the extent I understand them, I empathize with them. But they're not going to be there for the rest of. The, of eternity or the next fifty years probably, but the variances will be, have been, will have been granted.
Yeah. Um.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, thank you, um, so what we're talking about right now is intrusion into the aqueduct buffer. Right, and I understand and completely agree that we're trying to minimize, Nick, can you, can you bring up this cross section?
Yep.
So what, what?
So Chris, I just want to be clear, that's not what I was talking about, right? What I was talking about was. Was far end coverage on a property that is prominently on the aqueduct. I wasn't just talking about intrusion on the aqueduct.
Okay, all right, so, but I, I understand that, so Nick, I'm actually looking for the zoning code analysis chart. So just to break the, it down a little simpler, because that's the way my, I think it was Brian's chart.
Brian's chart, yes.
Yeah, so just to, just to get my head around it with my OCD, what we're actually doing is a single story. Master bedroom on the upper right, which is about. Structures went from two twenty-four ninety-eight to about five hundred and something square feet, an increase in patio. A small deck off the kitchen and stairs down and. The, the basement stairwell, I don't know if anybody's ever gone and peeked in there, but the, the access to the basement occupies the entire backyard. It actually is a set of patio steps that winds around, we're trying to clean that all up and tuck it up against the house. Into one single staircase, which will now prevent the flooding that he gets concurrently with every storm. And increased lawn area, which is what would be the net of that in the backyard. All of that work goes over. The other side of that wall, which is essentially invisible to the aqueduct walk, because I walked the aqueduct a few times to make sure. The only part that will actually show a difference from anybody on the aqueduct path. Would be where we close in the second story balcony, so to speak, right here, in that bottom section. To put, um, that's essentially an internal set of stairs that are a little more compliant with. Walking up and down. Now, to answer a question that came up before, yes, they did buy this house and it had a whole mess of quirky things with it that were all predated. Would it have been done this way now? Probably not, but when it was done, it was done. And as you go through a chart and start doing the statistical mathematics to the chart, the larger the number, the larger the percentage. So as we start breaking it all down, simply in my brain, and just my view, the increases or the, or the parts we're increasing on. Are the minimal, can we make the front patio smaller? Yeah, we can. Can we, can we shorten that coverage in the parking area? Well, the parking area of two hundred and three hundred square feet worth of variance and coverage becomes a math issue in the code. It, it's because there, there's potentially a potential spot for a car to sit there more than a certain amount of time according to the planning board. That becomes a parking space, not driveway. So that's how that increased, so as we went through the planning board versions a few times. To get to you guys, we went, also went through the architecture review board for historical, not really sure what they call it, historical approval? In the, because it's in the historic sites and they were, you know, that was a meeting we went through after our first planning board. And they also addressed all the views and all of the work if coming into the rear yard and the aqueduct buffer. And they passed us on to the next step, because in, when it boils down on paper, it looks complicated. But it's actually in reality, a little simple. And so this is what, when you get into the numbers and you start adding them all up and comparing. Twenty-eight hundred square foot house with a four thousand square foot house with a percentage of overage and you start running all these numbers, it gets a little out of sort in my head. I don't know if anybody else sees it that way, but that's how I view it at the moment.
Yeah, the only other thing that I would just add is that, is that. Mo- most of these coverage issues and FAR issues really don't impact the aqueduct. Right. They're really all addressed on the eastern part of the property. Um, and in fact, we're actually reducing. Coverage along the aqueduct and that, and that lower left-hand corner of, of the walkway, so. Um, we're actually mitigating, we're actually, we're actually reducing that, we're really counting along the aqueduct buffer.
Uh, any other comments from any other board members?
No, I, uh, it's Judd and. It, it is what it is with the aqueduct, with, with, when you look at this property, you, you really can't see. Everything that's there on the east side, on the east side, sorry, I just had, someone just faced me, apologize, I was distracted. Um. So. You know, would, would, would we approve, uh, whatever it is, a twelve-foot wall today on the property line of the aqueduct? Most likely not, but, but it's, 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 it's there. So everything that's being proposed, the five hundred square feet addition for the bedroom. You, you're not going to be able to see it from the aqueduct. As far as I, as far as I can tell from this.
Correct.
Um.
So, so Judd, I think that's true, but, you know, there are a lot of houses on the aqueduct, okay? And I don't want them five years from now or five months from now saying, well, why can't I have a hundred and fifty-seven percent of FAR or coverage with my house on the aqueduct? Right, that's the thing that really concerns me.
Yeah, I understand.
Um. Any other comments? I'll tell you what my instinct is, my instinct is we should. Adjourn this until next month. Make sure all board members have a chance to get out there and really get a good look at the site. And see how it looks and how they feel about it from, from both sides, from the aqueduct side and the other side. Um. And you can think about whether you need quite such a large patio and maybe we can. Uh, uh, make any cuts you can, maybe even the room, I don't know about that, I know five hundred. Square feet, it's not a huge addition, but, um, if we could get that number down and everybody could. Get to have a good look at the property and see how they really think it's going to affect, I think that. We would have a better idea going forward whether we could approve this next month.
Can I make one suggestion? Hey, Nick, can you bring up the rendering of the front? So that there is a current rendering with, and I believe that's the correct landscape. The changes that we're proposing is that one-story addition. And parking lot over on the left side, the rest of it you won't see, Nick, is there a rear?
We have the rear, correct.
There it is. So there's the staircase, there's the deck that comes off, and there's the new staircase tucked up against the building, those are our changes.
But from the front. And I guess.
Go back, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it. It, I gotta tell you, it feels like it's crowding the property and that's why I think it might benefit us to go take a look at it. And it's a big number and look, that's part of, it's not just a number, there's a reason those numbers are established that the way they are and a hundred and fifty-seven percent. Over allowable is just an awful lot of coverage on property, so.
Significant, more of them on the list that's with, that are with us.
On that list that you gave us, yeah, and a lot of those are on, in neighborhoods with much smaller pieces of property. Um, with the house as much closest together.
Yep, and that's exactly the point, is that we're a little larger. If we could have, I mean, look, this is, this is, I respect you guys, whatever your, you know, wishes are, your wishes are. But in an essential, I don't want to get stuck on the hundred and fifty-seven number because it's a statistical math equation. And it's a little, I mean, you have to take each, we take each application individually and review each one individually. So if that's what you need to do, then that's what we need to do, we're looking to get moved along to, um. Facilitate. Personal need, so it is a, it is a concern, time is a little bit of a concern for us. But if we get adjourned, that's what happens. I mean, we can't do anything about it. Um, I don't know if there's more information we can give you, but. You know, this is where we are.
Yeah, I would like to see some of that coverage come off. Uh, as much as you can. And I think that it really would benefit everybody, especially when looking where you're going to put the generator. To have one more look at the property with that in mind. I am always hesitant to ask people to put, I, believe me, I understand, after doing this for. Over ten years, it's a burden to ask people to kick it down the can, you know, the can down the road another month. But it's better than not getting approved tonight.
I agree, oh, I totally agree.
And it's better, uh, than. People not getting another look, given the fact that I didn't realize where the generator was going to go, I think we need to take one more look at this. And I think if you could come back with a lower number, and I can't make any promises, I don't know what any of the other board members think. That would make a difference to me.
So, so to help with this.
Yep.
Um, do you need me to potentially put some corner stakes out, locate something, meet some people there?
I don't think we need to meet anybody there, but some, some stakes would be great.
Sure.
That, I, yeah, I, I just, I, I think that. I think that maybe if. Uh, somebody could actually sort of walk you through with renderings in hand and show you where everything lays out, I think that would be, might be very helpful. Um, just so you get a better idea, maybe, you know, maybe we can arrange. A, a site visit with all of you at, at, you know, at a time that's convenient, uh, for you, so that. Because I, I do think it's important and I, and. Um. Um, it, it's worth taking the time, it's worth us, our time with you to make sure that, uh, you can see all the details, because, um. I, I, I think it will be worth it in the long run.
Yeah, so could you maybe, um, contact the village office? And set up sort of a time, we, we cannot all go together. Because that counts speeding, which we're not allowed to do, but if we could maybe go in shifts. On Saturday morning or something like that, um. I think it would be helpful to get another look at this.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Procedurally? Do we need to reapply?
No, no, it'll, you'll be on our agenda for next month. And you don't need to renotice it.
Oh, we don't need to renotice?
No, no.
Okay.
Because that puts us on the number three, I think.
No, this is a, this is zoning board, yeah, yeah, um, and then, uh, I'm sorry, Sarah, you mentioned, um, contacting the. No, this is a, this is zoning board. Yeah, yeah. Um, and then, uh, I'm sorry, Sarah, you mentioned um, contacting the village office to schedule.
Just to let them know, like, you know, that maybe you'll be available on a Saturday morning. Time between now and then, and then we can come, uh, we'll coordinate between ourselves, not all being there at the same time. But we can as much as possible get everybody out there.
Okay, as far as that goes.
I, I would only, I would only ask one favor.
Yes.
Everybody drive there and pull into the park.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Great. That'll be a good experiment. All right. Thank you. I know we took a lot of time on this, but I wanted to not uh, rush by it. There's a lot here. So thank you.
And we appreciate your time. We appreciate everything. And uh, yeah, we'll be in contact with the village and we'll figure it out.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next case is uh, Schleifer on Sycamore Lane.
Hey there, everybody. How are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Yeah, good. Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Kristen Lux. I'm from Kristen Lux Architecture and I'm here representing my clients, Black and Rebecca Schleifer, owners of one twenty Sycamore Lane. And I'd like to share my screen with you, if that sounds good.
Be- before you do that Warhol behind you, you, you know, you can buy the original now. It's going to be auctioned off.
I know.
Estimate of what, one and a quarter million dollars, I think, something like that.
That's, that's, that's well out of my budget. This is going to have to suffice.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, not at all. I'm always happy to talk about art. Um, yes, so one twenty Sycamore Lane. We are proposing a second story addition, or actually, excuse me, it's actually a third story addition because uh, the planning board let us know that we should be counting our basement as the first story. Our existing main story is the second story. And our new third story addition is about six hundred and forty square feet. And it's going to house two bedrooms, a bathroom and a linen closet. I am here to request three variances. The first, um, we are exceeded allowable coverage currently. So we have an existing non-conforming condition. The second, we also have an existing non-conforming FAR condition. And then the third, we're exceeding our allowable stories by going up to three stories. So I'm here to talk about those three things with you. Um, the first item is the allowable coverage and you can see here that we have our site plan. Prior owners went ahead and put in these two patios without requesting permission. So both of these are illegal, unfortunately, and they push our coverage well over what is allowable. We're proposing to remove the patio on the upper left, which is currently a basketball court and we would like to leave the patio and legalize it, which is this one here, just next to the house. So if we do that, um, the patio that we would like to legalize is three hundred and twenty-five square feet. And when we add that to our existing coverage, which is already over allowable at two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight square feet, we add on our new patio, that pushes us up, or actually, excuse me, our existing patio up to uh, two thousand eight hundred and eighty-three square feet. Um, allowable is two thousand. So you'll see we're a little bit above there. And I can show you. We also have this wonderful neighborhood map, much like our other people tonight presenting. And it gives you a view of surrounding houses. This house here is our house, which is uh, B on the map over here. Oh, excuse me, A on the map over here. Why don't I zoom in a little bit? And you'll see it down here. You can compare our existing and proposed coverage to uh, those of our neighbors. We are currently a hundred and twenty-seven point seven percent over allowable. And legalizing the existing patio adjacent to the house will put us up to a hundred and forty-four percent over allowable. Um, which isn't too crazy compared to some of what's going on in the neighborhood. Should I, would you like to chat about that or should I move on to the second item?
Uh, why don't you move on to the second item and then we can, we can circle back.
Very good. Uh, second item, exceeding allowable FAR. So we're currently over at a hundred and three point seven percent. And the new addition of about six hundred and forty square feet, that pushes us up to over uh, it's one twenty-six point five percent, so twenty-six percent over allowable FAR. And again, this nice chart here shows you a good comparison of our house at the top comparing to others in the neighborhood. You know, let me go on to the next page. And you can also see from this other neighborhood map, I've gone ahead and I've singled out um, three other houses in the surrounding neighborhood, which have done basically the exact same addition. Their lot sizes are a tad bit bigger, but you can see uh, that the FAR is definitely over what is allowable. Let me zoom in on that.
Kristen, based on your own chart, right, you would go to the top of the list on FAR, yes?
Let's see, let's just confirm that. One twenty-six, that's correct. Yes.
And coverage too, I think, right? I think that.
No, there's a, there's one that's higher on coverage.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, here, let me, I'll bump back.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I saw that. Where, where is that house?
Uh, the one that is.
On Harriman.
Harriman, hold on, let me, so that was the, we're, we're looking at FAR now, right? I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm actually looking at coverage right now. It's one that was higher than you, yeah, one ninety-eight.
Oh, yeah, that's actually the neighboring house. That's the same addition that we have. So that's, okay, yeah, that's here.
I know.
And that's this guy here.
Okay. Oh, one oh nine, one oh nine Harriman is that one. Okay, I got you.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I have a question first of all on coverage. So your, your proposed addition doesn't add anything to coverage. Coverage relates just to legalizing the patios that were added by the prior owner, or at least legalized one of them, right?
Exactly. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Um, and then let me talk to you briefly about stories. So uh, let me tell you a story. So uh, we're, our, our proposed story, uh, unfortunately, the Greenberg GIS system, it actually calls our house out as uh, one story. It does not count the basement as a story. So we're actually requesting a third story, even though the Greenberg GIS, it would be a second story. Uh, and that is because our basement ceiling is more than four feet above the exterior grade. So the small addition that we are doing, and I'm just going to show you that plan, it would actually be considered a third story because our basement stands so high above the ground. And I will show you. You can see here. So here's our first work plan. You can see, uh, we're keeping our existing stair here. And then this is what we're proposing above. So it's just over the left hand part of the house and essentially it's not even going to look like another floor. We're actually just changing the pitch of the roof. And then at the back of the house, we're adding a shed dormer so that we can get proper ceiling height for those two bedrooms. And I can show you what that will look like in elevation. So here is our existing exterior street elevation and the new addition will be over this left part of the house. And here's the back. So again, this is, this will be over the right part of the house. And here's our proposed front elevation. And you can see that the pitch of the roof has been raised and the slope has increased. And then here's the back of the house, the same higher pitch and then a nice shed dormer to kind of tuck those two bedrooms into.
Um, any comments or questions?
So in terms of, and I'm sure you, you have the, the correct, for why this counts, the basement counts as a first story? It's, is the basement the full sort of extent of the, the footprint or is it only over on the left side as you're facing the house?
Yeah, so it's a weird condition. Let me pull up the basement plan and we can talk about it a little better that way. So.
Yeah, my understanding is it's just how far above the ground it is, right?
That at any point.
At any point.
Yeah, it's, it's the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if the ceiling exceeds four feet above the lowest grade for a certain amount of space, it counts as a story. And you can see here's our basement plan, the left side, which is where we're building our addition above, is all garage with some storage space in the back. And then the right hand side, you've got a showroom in the back, unfinished basement in the front, and then we've got a little powder room and a storage.
Yep. Yeah. It's a funny thing. We've had this a few times before. It is funny. It's, sometimes it's even only like half a floor, but it's counted as a floor. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the sloping earth too, we have um, a big, big uh, difference in in spite of the elevation.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see we have a big difference in grade. It drops down the garage doors and then at the right side of the house, it raises up.
Any other questions?
Uh, it's judge, just to go back and clarify that on coverage, you're removing the two hundred and thirty square feet of the basketball hoop patio. You're legalizing the three hundred and twenty-five, the existing patio. I think it's like three, three and a quarter.
Yes, that's correct.
And that's it with coverage?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
Is the, is the, is the actual highest part of the roof higher when you're done or is it within the existing?
The existing peak of the new roof is higher than it is currently, but it does fall within legal building height. And I believe it called that out here. Let me. Yeah, so here we go. We've got maximum building height, existing is twenty-five foot eight and it's going to go up to thirty feet at the highest point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, the kids gym, is that a structure?
The kids gym, that's like a swing set.
Right, so a structure.
Uh, yeah, yeah, yes, if you want to call it a structure, yeah, somebody built it.
Well, I don't want to call it a structure, but the building department usually wants to call it a structure, right?
It's funny that you said that. They didn't call it out at all. And it's just a swing set. Yeah, it wasn't an issue with them, but I'm happy to ask them about it if you like.
I think, I think it's better to not.
Yeah. I do, I do too. I definitely do too. However, I want you, I want you to be happy. So if you would like me to, I will.
It sounds like Ed's been out there and he didn't think it was.
Plug it.
Exactly. So it is. Um, it's on the map, so it must have been there when he was there. Uh, can I just see that, that chart again that you first showed us? Because I have to tell you, the stories don't bother, it, it doesn't bother me that, you know, you need an extra story because say you're within buildable height and that doesn't seem to be a huge concern. The coverage in the FAR are sort of on the high end and I think um.
Right, but the coverage is, is really legitimizing the existing coverage.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Right.
In fact, she's making the patio out. She's small, she's making the coverage smaller.
Right, right. Okay, fair enough. Absolutely. Um, the FAR would be, would be the highest in that neighborhood. Yeah.
Right.
Um, can I, can I just say, based on what I saw on the Greenberg property cards and what the planning department told me, those things were not the same thing. And like the other people that presented before me, of course, I've taken all of this information from the town of Greenberg GIS system. I would say everyone should take that with a grain of salt because I don't know that it's one hundred percent accurate.
I hear what you're saying. Okay. Uh, any other comments from anybody on the board? And uh, I, I don't suppose there's anybody who wants to be heard on this. I don't see any hands raised, but if there is, you can pipe in, Sarah, and let me know. Um, yeah. I'm gonna make, nobody's raising their hand. Okay, great. Um, I am going to make a motion to approve. A- as I said before, I don't, the stories don't bother me. That's something that we've dealt with before. It's sort of a quirk of our zoning laws, but that doesn't, the garage doesn't strike me as a whole story. And as long as you're within buildable height, uh, that doesn't trouble me too much. Uh, you are reducing the coverage, although the coverage is a little bit high for this neighborhood. Um, you are reducing and you're really just legalizing what's existing. Nothing's being added. Um, the FAR, as I noted before, it does make you high, but given the design, I don't think it's overly intrusive and I think it does fit in with the neighborhood. Having seen the other houses up and down that street and therefore I just, it's not as troubling. It's a little higher than we like to go, but it's sort of on that line as far as I'm concerned. So I will make a motion to approve, but do I have a second?
A second.
Great. Okay, so we'll go from uh, bottom to top on my screen. John Dimling?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Rosie?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so you are approved and I will send you out a letter uh, at the end of the week.
Thank you so much. It's nice to chat with all of you. I hope you have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Lark is our next case. John Malone, how are you?
Hi, everybody. John Malone, First of None Architecture, up saying the Larks. Um, let me pull up a share. So we're in front of you today for two variances, uh, one for coverage and one for pool location. Uh, the project includes both an addition and a patio. It says deck, but it's actually patio and um, and uh, a swimming pool. The uh, quickly, just to understand the, the project, um, the existing uh, the existing house is a contemporary from the uh, late eighties, early nineties. Uh, the, the goal is to uh, change the style of the house to a, a more classical uh, house. And also to fix some of the deficits of the current house or quickly to go to the existing uh, plans. The house on the first level has a very small uh, existing kitchen relative to the size of the house. There's a dining room extension that um, is failing. There was footings that were too small when it was designed, so that needs to be replaced. And there's some double height space uh, in this area that makes the breakfast area kind of awkward relative to the kitchen. So the goal was to expand the kitchen uh, add a mudroom. And also there's a garage that's uh, the width of the garage accommodates like one and a quarter cars, even though it looks like it should accommodate more. So those were sort of the first floor deficits. On the second floor, uh, you'll notice the primary bedroom suite has no walk-in closets and a very awkward odd bathroom. Uh, and you know, this again is the awkward, uh, open to blow space like with a catwalk across it and areas that are unutilized. And then it has a single shared bathroom for the three uh, bedrooms uh, with the washer and dryer inside the bedroom. So the goal of the renovation is to correct some of those deficits. Again, quickly, this is the contemporary design of the existing house. If you guys haven't seen it, we also have some images if you'd like to see that. Uh, so the, the new house with a proposed revision, puts in a more typical uh, silver kitchen. Um, wedge is a mudroom in here between. Wedge is a mudroom in here between the garage and the kitchen area. Um, makes a change to the powder room location so that the stair could be a more traditional stair. Um, and then the the size of the rooms uh, hasn't really grown. And that it's really just correcting those those deficits. There's some storage and pantry stuff that actually it was a higher priority that increased the size of the rooms. And then on the second level, there's a master or a primary bedroom with um, better uh, closet space and a more functional bathroom. And then there is a, one of the three bedrooms has an en suite bath so that it could operate as a guest room or. You know, bathroom, there's a shared bath that's been added. And then also the the space has been. Part of what was driving this is the need for work at home space. So there's a small office and some thought into how you might work on. Lower levels, both both um, adults have home office areas. And then the elevation of what we're looking for, so from the front of the house which faces north is a much uh, more traditional. Classical design. Um, and then side elevations are kind of resultant. And then in the rear of the house also. Uh, sort of a more traditional classical design. Uh, the dining room is sort of a sunroom type language and there's a balcony cover for the patio. Uh, in terms of the variances that we're looking for, one is a variance that we're often in front of you for. When it, when reviewing swimming pools, so the um. The proposed. The proposed swimming pool is located in what's effectively the rear yard of the house. However, the house that the lots go through uh, from Beachwood through to Osceola. And so the lot effectively has two fronts, so the um, the pool is in um. The pool is in the rear yard, but there there is no way that it can be in both uh, rear yard and front yard. So that's, that's a typical. Uh, thing we're asking for. In terms of the expansion to the house, you can see here. This is the limit of the proposed expansions used here is here. In terms of their footprint. Uh, in terms of FAR, we're below allowable, if they are, we're below uh, heights restrictions or anything. So again. The only uh, thing we're asking for is building coverage. So we've provided a chart uh, where we focused on the building coverage of of the properties that we looked at. We tried to keep a relatively consistent neighborhood all within the same zone. Uh, we have twenty-six properties and I think fifteen of them are over the allowable. Um, I think less than that, about eight of them are in above uh, the range that we are looking for. Some are significantly above that range. With an average closer to the range we're looking for. So right now, the property in terms of coverage is at ninety-four percent of allowable and we're asking to go to one twenty-four. So again, the allowed coverage is um, three twenty-six. I mean, I'm sorry, thirty-two sixteen and we're about eight hundred uh, square feet above that. Just under eight hundred. The uh, the coverage, again, the coverage overage is almost entirely associated. With the pool and the wall. Hot tub, pool and wall piece. So the impact of that. You know, all of this, all of that work is flat on the ground, so there's no volume associated with any of that work. Uh, the pool is supposed to be screened from the neighbors and from Osceola. So we have um, shown in the site plan. Solid fences on either side of the property here, which provides screening to the neighbors' yards. And then a very dense uh, planting addition to the rear yard, which is already a a tree environment. You look quickly at the uh, aerial of what's happened there. So that's, this is the property and you can see that on the Osceola side, there's already. On that side. Um, so I think uh, you know, that might be. You know, civil, I don't think you guys need to look at it, but basically there has been a uh, a detailed civil design that any um. Negative impact that's associated with the impervious surface of of the pool has been. Addressed with stormwater, so the pool will not cause any runoff or any other environmental impacts. And it'll be fully screened from the patio. And we believe that the uh, requested amount is uh, similar to the neighborhood. And we shouldn't have any negative impacts on the neighborhood.
Any questions for John?
John, is there, is there a fence?
Yes, there is. There's a fence probably on both. There's a solid fence um, on each property line here.
Right.
And it stops here and then when it goes from O's to X's, it goes to an open fence. So this is a solid wood fence. We have details for both.
Right, okay. Right.
Uh, on the side yards and then in the rear yard, there's an open fence so that planting will move through it and it has, you know. It it's not really the same requirement for screening up the rear yard.
Okay.
And in in that diagram, can you show, in addition to the pool, what are the new areas of coverage?
So uh, the new areas of coverage are this, well, in this area right now, Rosemary, there's a patio. In this recessed portion and that extends out here. And that's about four hundred, I think, it's about two hundred and forty square feet. So that patio uh, is being taken out and the patio is being relocated about the same size here. So the new, the new coverage area is is this area here. And this, the new building covered, like, it's all building coverage, but the new part that is building is this area here, this little, this few square feet. And then this area over here.
And patio is not there. So in other words, you're relocating the patio.
Yeah, it's new, it's a new patio, sir. It's just, it's just, right, this is flat on the ground and then the pool is flat on the ground.
Any other comments?
Oh, quickly, there's a few other items. There is a generator pad shown here, a window well that's associated with, you know, making the. Egress in the basement and a few other uh, AC pads that are new.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for John?
Uh, could you go back to table on on coverage?
Yeah, I wanted to see as well.
Of neighborhood coverage, um, John.
Yes, could you, is there a way to enlarge that a little bit so I can read it?
Here, I can slow down if you want me to keep trying to send me now.
Thank you. So it looks like. The 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 proposed is well above the median in terms of the overage.
You compare the IF twenties to the IF twenties. It's, uh, if you take out those IF forties. Then you're on the high end. There's one, there's one that's higher. At one fifty-two. But everything else looks to be either under or pretty close to the line. Am I wrong about that?
Yes, I know you're right. I think that that's why I want to look at it.
Yeah, we can look at specific properties if there's ones that. Now, we do have, right. I mean, I think the neighborhood is relatively. Consistent. Let's see, where are the high? On the other side of Osceola is the high forty.
Yeah.
So that neighborhood is a little less consistent, I think.
Yeah.
Right, you know, because you have some smaller.
Right, right, right.
I know there's something that's like two hundred and thirty and I'm sure that's probably.
Yeah, that's the IF forty. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm trying to see, what's that? Um, where's property D? Okay.
Do any of those other houses on Beachwood have pools?
They do. Again, you know. It's hard for us to accurately determine coverage associated with pools. Um, because we don't, we don't have surveys of those properties.
Right.
So, you know, I think we try to be conservative to not, you know, lie about those. But I I think those are probably. Like, if you look at this layout here or this layout here compared to what we're proposing to do, I think those are probably, let's see what they. Actually show on the. Yeah, V, V is shown as under and T is shown as pretty much at. You know, hundred and two, I, you know, I think. Again, we try to be accurate, but we we err on the side of being conservative, meaning. Not make up what we don't have information on, so. Um, I have a feeling those are probably more are closer to what. What we're actually showing here, because if you see the coverage related with the home and the coverage of this pool is almost as large as the home. And you see it on the aerial, so I think it must be uh, higher.
Right, so, but uh, in your own calculations though, right, this, you have swimming pool and hot tub and. Pool equipment pad, there was an add up to a hundred and eight hundred and fifty-eight square feet, right?
Right.
And that's really the change, right? You're going from three thousand and ninety-six to three thousand nine hundred and ninety-six. It's all about the pool.
It's really, yes, it's really, the impact is really the pool, right?
Right, and then as you pointed out, the pool has no volume above ground, right, and it's screening.
Right.
Right, okay.
Any other questions or comments for John? And I'm assuming, as I said, it doesn't look like anybody is raising their hands, so interrupt me if I'm wrong, but otherwise. I'm assuming there's no comments from the public. Um, all right, so I'm, I'm gonna make a motion.
Uh, Sarah, before you do that, John, John, it's John Dimling. Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Help, help, give me a, a. Some way to distinguish what you're asking for here from somebody else coming in and that, you know. With with the, with the same sort of thing. I don't want to, I, I, as my fellow board members know, I'm concerned about precedent and I want to have some reason. To distinguish this from somebody else on that same street. Or five other people on that same street coming in and wanting to to build a pool.
Well, I I'm not sure, I'm not sure we could separate that from, you know, the distinguishing, I mean, in that question is mostly about what distinguishes this. Property from other properties. I think, you know, it's a flat, a relatively flat property. Uh, in terms of the variance request for the rear yard, I mean, for the pool location, because the property has two front, that's a special condition with a property with two front yards.
Right.
I don't think the property really has any other special condition. I think what I would say is that we. The location of the house, the size of the rear yard and the relationship to the other houses is such that we can limit any impacts of the proposed. Um, you know, we can mitigate uh, impacts associated with the request. So there might be other properties in the neighborhood where it would be harder to screen the pool or. That the request may be related to something that isn't flat on the ground, like a pool house or shit or something like that. But there's no other really distinguishing.
The the screening seems helpful from my perspective.
Right, but John, if we vote, you know, I'm looking at John Malone's map. I'm talking to John Dimling. If we vote yes on this. Then properties B, C, D, and E would have, you know, presumptively valid claims to say, hey, they did it. How come I can't do it? Like, I think, I think you have to vote with that mindset, like. These properties are almost identical. They're on Beachwood, they back up onto Osceola, the lots are almost the same size. Right, the houses maybe a little closer to the front of, you know, the, maybe a little closer to Beachwood or Osceola, but essentially they're all the same.
I I appreciate that, Charlie. I was, I was hoping to come up with something that.
Yeah.
What you just said and it's hard to, hard to do.
Right, it's hard to say why this one and none of these.
Yeah.
Right, could I, could I see that uh, coverage chart again, John?
I I think, you know, there there is, uh, I know you guys have consistent concern about precedent, but actually the. The criteria from the state level and the code has more to do with um, impacts, right? And whether those impacts can be mitigated and whether the benefit uh, outweighs any negative impact. So. You know, part of the reason we have this in front of you is we can't really identify uh, negative environmental impacts to the neighbors and that's, that's different. No, I I think we're we're asking the the board to judge this not based on on. Precedent as much as, you know, we're asking for relief because we believe what we put in front of you doesn't have any negative impacts to adjacent properties or to the neighborhood. Not based on what somebody.
I'm, I'm getting old, John. Could you just make that chart a little bit?
Oh, Jesus, yeah, nobody can. I can't even, I couldn't even read on my own screen. I don't know why I looked at that.
I mean, I I would just say, um, Charlie, I disagree a little bit on B, C, and D because they're all. Already over on, um, and and this property is under. And if they wanted to come here and add thirty percent, I would say that actually B, C, and D would absolutely be a no. I mean, that would just be too high on those numbers.
That's a good point, but if they wanted to add a smaller pool and.
Right, 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 right.
Twenty-four percent, right? Right, I I wasn't specifying the same kind of pool, but I, if they wanted a pool. Because their neighbors have a pool, it would be hard to say, well, you can't have one.
Right, depending on how big a pool they want. Right, right, yeah. No, 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 I agree with that. I would just distinguish it that, you know. Um, those numbers are are a good bit higher and therefore gives them a lot less to work with.
Yeah, coin taken. Yep.
Yeah. Um, any other comments or questions? Okay, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve. I think this is borderline because I think you are adding quite a bit of coverage, but it's. I think just the amount that I would be comfortable with going up to, um, it's knocking on the door for sure. Um, in terms of the placement of the pool, I mean, I think that's just the nature of having two streets on either side of your property, so. I'm not as troubled. It seems to me you're placing it in the backyard and and that's what it's all about. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve if someone will second it.
I'll second it, Judd.
Great, thanks, Judd. Okay, so top to bottom, Charlie.
I vote yes.
Rosie?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, you are approved and I'll send you out a letter at the end of the week.
Thanks very much, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. Uh, okay, the last matter is Pasco, I believe it is, yep, Ten Hancock Place.
John, are you recused from this one too?
No, I don't think so. I've not got anything.
All right, okay.
By by the interesting, though, I I got a, uh. You know, the the certified mail, but the mailman, uh, we never signed for it. The mailman. Just tore it off and signed his own name and took it back. When I asked him about that, he claimed that he's allowed to do that. He said, well, in in the alternative, since you weren't home. I would, I would have left something, so you would have had to come to the post office to to sign it, so I thought I was doing you a favor.
Oh, there you go. He was. All right, hello, how are you?
Good evening, how are you guys doing?
Good.
Um, yeah, so this uh, this application was before you last year and was approved. And this is just a minor update to a previous approval. Um, if I can share my screen right now, I'll get through it.
I'm sorry, uh, just, I'm taking the minutes. What what is your name?
Uh, James Crap from Studio Park for the owner, Richard. Sorry for the lack of introduction.
I'm Judd Harsher. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. So, uh, previously last year, you approved a variance for additional site coverage. Uh, for an added pool at Ten Hancock Place. Uh, subsequently, everything was approved, we started reconstruction and we realized due to field conditions. And we realized due to field conditions that our equipment pad was slightly undersized, uh, where we had previously approved it. So what we've done is proposed a new location with a slightly larger equipment pad. And we're requesting relief of our previous variance for an additional thirty-three square feet. It's very, very minimal. So just to give you frame of reference, so this is what was approved. Where I'm gonna show you, this is what was approved um, last year. Essentially, an equipment pad in this area here, there's a fence in this portion. I'll show you on the diagram. Or the more detailed portion, there's an existing fence here. Our equipment pad had to be enlarged. It was up against the pool. We were up against the buffer, so we needed to move the equipment. So subsequently, what we did was we proposed moving the equipment to the other side of the lot. Which is now presently over here, when it used to be here, so. Essentially, nothing is within the buffer. Everything is screened as per the request of the local uh, landscape architect. And we're just really requesting an extra uh, approval of thirty-three square feet against the existing variance that we already had approved last year. That's the.
It's just a coverage variance.
Correct. So we we were approved in that variance last year, but we just, we had to up it a little bit to accommodate our equipment bed.
And that's just out of necessity because of the.
Partially due to, partially due to the equipment that was selected that we hadn't finalized when we started, and it was just slightly undersized in general. So the pad just became bigger.
Any questions? Comments? Okay, so I will make a motion. Seems fairly straightforward to me. Everything else has been approved. It's just making a slightly bigger pad for. To accommodate the necessary equipment, so I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Super, thank you. Okay, so bottom to top, John Dimling.
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Rosie?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Alrighty, you are approved. I I vote yes, and I will send you a letter at the end of the week.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good evening, guys.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody. That was uh, that was longer than I expected that uh, one of those matters took quite a while and I guess we'll. See them too. But hopefully we'll have a a good look at it before then and see what we think. So thank you.
All right, have a good, have a good night, everybody.
So on, just one question on that matter. So are we expecting that we'll, we get some kind of a notification about when?
I'll touch base with Sarah Palermo. Uh, I'll just tell them to let us know, basically. When they have it marked out. Um, and if they want to tr- try to coordinate, you know, a time where they give us a time and we could stop by and talk to them. Uh, I'll let you all know about that. We'll just make sure we're not all there at the same time.
And and the reason for that is because otherwise it's a meeting.
What's critical mass? Like, can you just be there but not three?
Right, yes, exactly. Yes.
Okay.
Not, not a quorum, I guess.
Right, not a quorum. That's where I was going.
If you can't make it that particular time, I'll just make sure they keep it marked out for a few days and you can stop by whenever, but I'll I'll be in touch about that.
All right.
Yeah, it is a, it is a funny little property. I'd gone, gone down and.
Yeah.
From the Aqueduct too.
And I'm not sure what I think about it exactly with some of the new details today, so I'd I'd like.
Yeah. Definitely.
All right, have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.